Moore, come forward and give us the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you this day and we ask of your help and your guidance in the things that are going on in this room. Father, we're very grateful to have our mayor and city council who continue to look to you and trying to do what is best for this city. Father, we just pray you be with their families and you be with the people that they work with and help them to have the patience and the guidance that they need in leading these as well. But Father, we just ask once again that you be with them in these decisions for our city. And Father, we just thank you for this day, and it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, I will call the city council meeting of October 7th to order. Mrs. Vok, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. I'd like to start this meeting a little bit differently. I'd like to read you eight lines of a poem by A. E. Housman in light of Cole Capola's tragic passing in his funeral yesterday. I'm wearing an orange shirt still. "The time you won your town the race, we cheered you through the marketplace. Man and boy stood cheering by, and home we brought you, shoulder high. Today the road all runners come; shoulder high we bring you home, and set you at your threshold down, townsman of a stiller town." Let's have a moment of silence, please, for Cole. All right, we'll go on with life, I guess. Agenda deletions, and I have a number of these that might be considered. Tammy brings to my attention that under four, four A and B should be reversed in the way that they're handled. Under public comment, we have the police chief coming forward. I would like to ask Mr. Kramer whether he would like his nine-four. In other words, the comments about the wall here while the police chief is here, it's purely your pleasure. I'm sure city council will be...
Well, I think that's a, it's really just a discussion of what we can do. I think the chief probably has got some really good input on it. However, also, I think some of the public works people have got some really good information on that as well. I don't see them here, but it'd be kind of nice if they were here. But I don't have a problem moving it up.
What is the pleasure? I think it would be useful to have...
It'd be more appropriate, I think, moving it.
All right.
Let's move it up. We can grab Monty.
He's watching. Under Attorney Chef Wright's comments, we also have, seem to have, a nine-B-two, which Mrs. Turner, I believe, is yours. There's so many of these, it's hard to keep them straight.
Yes, it is, Mr. Turner.
And you may want to move it up. Again, I defer to you.
Certainly, if we can cover all the issues at that time, that would be fine.
Save us some money.
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it while he's here.
Also, under the rental, it's there two places. One, under Jim's comments, and one, I put it on the agenda. With your permission, I'd just like to move all of it up to Jim's portion. And then...
Mr. Mayor, are we not having Ms. Treverton giving a...
Yes, I think we need to move it up.
Yeah, move it up. I'm sorry. That's a improvement.
It should be back in the public comment.
Yes, so it'll be moved up to the public comment. And then, I believe, Wayne and Jim, you have pretty much the same topic here. Let's see. All aboard, eight-two, and seven, nothing.
I think they're really too distinct. Mine is really going to be an update, which shouldn't take very long because it's the EIS, and I think your railroad commission is having a meeting next Monday in which they're going to come together and come up with some recommendations and ideas. So mine's going to be very brief. I think his relates to a resolution to endorse our senator's position.
All right, and to be added to that, not for action today, but the Treasure Coast Council of Governments, which I represent the city on, has taken a position which we can talk about at that point in time. Are there further additions, changes, deletions?
Hope not.
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five, nothing. That will move us on to proclamations. Who has the mental illness?
I do.
Mr. Kramer?
Okay, this is for the Mental Illness Awareness Week. Valerie Smith, are you...
Or?
I'm Jim Davis. I'm a member of NAMI, past president. Valerie is on her way, but we were at the county commission meeting at 9:00 a.m., so she's probably walking the door any second. But I'm here to receive the proclamation, too.
Wonderful. Well, let's, I hope I read this right, we've got a lot of big words here. The proclamation states that whereas serious mental illnesses such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in every four people annually. And serious mental illness is a highly treatable medical illness of the brain posing the same concern as cancer, heart disease, diabetes, and other illnesses. And scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illnesses resulting in more effective treatment that allows people to fully reclaim productive lives. And misunderstandings exist about the many mental illnesses, and our social culture often wrongly imposes stigma on those mental illnesses. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim October 5th through October 11th as Mental Illness Awareness Week in the city of Vero Beach to mainly increase the public awareness of mental illnesses and to promote treatment and recovery. Jim?
Thank you, thank you. NAMI is a grassroots organization in the community, and we support and advocate for the mentally ill, as well as provide some educational programs that are free to the public. And this week, since it's Mental Illness Awareness Week, we're hosting a luncheon at First Presbyterian Church for the faith community to educate that community about how they can better serve their congregations with information on mental illness. And I do not see Valerie here yet, but, and also, I'm the vice chair of the Mental Health Collaborative, which is composed of the funders for mental health services as well as the service providers. And we've been working hard on a number of issues, and next month, we have some very exciting news to present to the county commission and perhaps this body about how the law enforcement and the court system can better embrace those with mental illness.
Tell us a little bit about NAMI and what it means and how people can get involved.
Well, NAMI is a 100% volunteer organization. We meet the first Tuesday of every month at the United Way Building on 14th Avenue at 6:30. We invite the public to come to the meetings, to be involved. We have what's called a Care and Share Program where people can voice their situations and share with one another, because I have a daughter with a mental illness, so I've been through it now for about 20 years. And when you go through that sort of pilgrimage together, you support one another and you know quite a bit of information about how to help. Mental illness does have a stigma, and it is a biological illness. It's a chemical imbalance in the brain. It's highly treatable. But, you know, many people just don't understand mental illness. You know, they read the newspapers, some unfortunate events, and they have judgments about that. So we're here to, like I said, to educate, to support, to advocate, and we're part of 1,300 NAMI affiliates across the nation, and we do provide funding for research for mental illness. And there's some tremendous strides being taken to treat the mentally ill.
Your partners just walked in.
Great. This is Valerie Smith, our president, and Dolores Mackey.
Jim had a better pair of running shoes on. But Jim is our past president, and I'm sure that he informed you of the work NAMI is doing. Did you mention the luncheon?
I did.
All right, well, we are well organized and well covered, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jim, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
We have some supporters with us as well.
Bring them all up, the more the merrier.
Introduce them.
Introduce.
I don't know everyone's name here.
Please, please.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jenny Canelo, and I'm the Indian River County Youth Service Coordinator with Safe Space.
Good morning, I'm Susan Masaitis. I'm the facilities manager here in Vero for Safe Space.
I'm Victoria Sharp. I'm a victims advocate for the Indian River County Sheriff's Office, and I specialize in domestic violence.
Hi, I'm Tony Abraham. I'm a committee member for Walk a Mile in Her Shoes and a volunteer for Safe Space.
I'm Bob Livingston. I was on the first board of directors when we formed Safe Space 30-plus years ago, so I've been with it for a long time.
Good morning, Parisa Erfani. I'm volunteer.
Okay, so whereas each day in America, four women are murdered by their intimate partners, and every 60 seconds in America, four women are abused by their intimate partners, and one-third of all American women report being physically or sexually abused by a husband or boyfriend sometime during their lives. And National Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides all Americans the opportunity to recommit to ensuring that every relationship be violence-free, and that all domestic violence victims deserve a safe place where they can live with respect, resources, restoration, and justices. And in Indian River County, Safe Space, Inc. joins forces with law enforcement, victim service programs, criminal justice officials, social service organizations, and concerned citizens throughout the county to fight domestic violence. And together, their commitment and compassion help to ensure that our community steps forward to lend a hand to domestic violence victims in need. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby recognize and honor the month of October 2014 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and furthermore express sincere appreciation to Safe Space and for those committed to promoting peace and preventing domestic violence in our community.
Thank you. On behalf of Safe Space, we thank the city of Vero Beach for the proclamation. And as you all know, 2014 thus far has been a deadly year in domestic violence here on the Treasure Coast. On October 25th, we're going to be out having our Walk a Mile event at the Indian River Mall. We encourage you all to come out. I'm going to be wearing these wonderful red high heels that I brought with me. Those very large ones. And actually, tonight, here in the city of Vero Beach, because you guys are so wonderful and honoring us, we're going to have an event at Osceola Bistro. It's a pre-event. I will, again, have my red high heels on if you'd like to come over and see that. And we'll have some competitions, we'll have some fundraising events. It's going to be a good time, so we hope everyone will come out. That's 5:30 to 7:30 tonight. Am I right on that time? 5:30 to 7:30, please join us. Hopefully, you'll wear purple in support of domestic violence. That's what we're all doing. Safe Space is the only domestic violence shelter on the Treasure Coast. It's the only domestic violence outreach program, so we have to keep this alive. We have to continue doing this. Every day in Indian River County, we take a report of domestic violence, and those are just the reported ones. The Vero Beach Police Department, Felsbrough Police Department, Indian River Shores Police Department, we're all taking reports in our jurisdictions every single day, and those are only the reported ones. So we have to continue to push this. We have to continue to strive to recognize domestic violence, to bring awareness to it, and to stand up against domestic violence. So that's what our events are all about, and we appreciate your support. We hope that you will all come out and join us for all those.
Where is the shelter?
You can't, you can't.
Unfortunately, it's something we can't, we don't disclose locations. It's something that we don't talk about.
Okay. How many people do you shelter, then?
The Martin County facility has a 48-bed. They actually can make more than 48, but they are staffed every day for 48 beds. They have a system in place for overflow. We also have a facility in St. Lucie County as well as Indian River County. They have been transitioning those into more of...
Independent living.
Independent living, more for, say, for instance, a woman who has no children, who can't get other kinds of support because all the other supports are for women with children, so on. But women without children are just as prone to domestic violence as a woman with a child, so they have to have somewhere that they can go as well to rehabilitate themselves. So that's what the Indian River County facility is more geared towards these days.
We also have services available for men that are victims of domestic violence as well. I know she said women, but we also have services available for men.
Right. Eighty-five percent of the cases are towards women, so statistically, 15% are reported are against men, so.
Do you have a website?
SafespaceFL.org.
All right.
I was going to say, I am wearing purple today in honor of Safe Space, and I want to thank you and all the volunteers, everybody that support this facility. Domestic violence crosses all economic, all educational ranges, so do not think this is just something in somebody else's neighborhood. It could be happening down the street from your home. And being able to provide these women with some shelter, some counseling, is life-saving. So I thank you. I will be out at the mall on the 25th to cheer all my heroes that are out in their red heels. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
And thank you, Ms. Turner, for all your support over the years.
Thanks.
Come forward, please.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you, too. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Glad.
Thank you so much.
Been here a long time, haven't you?
Thank you very much. Always appreciate it. Hi, Karen.
Hi.
Sir, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I presume Mr. Young is next, as I crack? Hey, Tony, good to see you.
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. It's beautiful.
Okay, for everybody who doesn't know me, I'm Tony Young, and typically, we're receiving from the city proclamations, so we're going to reverse this today. The Veterans Council of Indian River County is going to do a presentation of this painting, but before we begin, I'll just ask the folks that are with me to come up and introduce themselves, because they'll do a finer job than I will, so, please.
I'm John Matthews. I'm on the Memorial Island Sanctuary Committee and past president of the Veterans Council.
I'm Kim Pilger, and I'm the current secretary of the Veterans Council.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Marie St. Vincent. I'm with the Military Moms Per Group, but I am now the new public information officer for the Veterans Council.
Lee G. Smith, local artist. I have another one of my pieces, too, the 90th anniversary poster.
Okay, this is fun. It's a glorious day for me because I love Memorial Island and I love veterans. And about a year ago, about a year ago, I went on the island to a artist show, and we had the 50th anniversary of Memorial Island coming up. And Lee was in her booth, and I said, "Lee, I don't know of a depiction of Memorial Island that we have. Would you be interested in capturing the essence of the island?" And she says, "Tony, well, what do you have in mind?" And I said, "Well, the heart of the island are the men that are honored there, the cenotaphs, which are the memorial markers, and then the national colors behind it." And she said, "I can do that." And as you can see, this is a very Floridian depiction in a bright, cheerful manner of things that we all hold dear. So I just want to highlight that as a preface and give you the other rest of the story. The Veterans Council of Indian River County commissioned Lee to create a tribute of Memorial Island for the 50th anniversary in May of 2014. Lee completed the work that depicts the square of the memorial markers that honor the men of Indian River County that have given their lives and service to their country from World War I to the USS Cole terrorist attack in 2000. The painting is called Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary: Cenotaphs at Morning Light. Copies of these paintings were given to Alma Lee and Helen Glenn's family on that day in honor of their work to make the sanctuary a reality. In addition, smaller copies of this painting have been made for the families that have lost members in combat. Three families so far have been able to reach out and provide them. They are the Louder Milks, Michelle Dale, and also the Jackson family. The Louder Milks had two brothers. One was killed in World War II going into Iwo Jima. The second was killed as a armed patrol in Vietnam. Michelle Dale lost her son in Afghanistan, I believe. Yes, Afghanistan. And then Bob Jackson is an attorney in town, and his brother was killed as a helicopter pilot in Vietnam. So they, all of the families are considered to be Gold Star families, and they will receive a copy of this painting from the Veterans Council. The original painting was displayed at our Victory Store at the mall. It was moved to make space for other venues in that storefront. The painting was purchased by the Veterans Council by a fund gift by the Egan family. And if you know the Egans, they're involved with Citrus, and they've been here for a long time. And in fact, a member of the Egan family was lost in Vietnam and never accounted for by POWs, et cetera, and he's recognized in the Vietnam Memorial there. A recommendation, a motion was made that this painting be provided to the city of Vero Beach on indefinite loan for display, and that was approved. And then I came to the city council and I asked Tammy and Mr. O'Connor, when would it be appropriate to give it to the city? And they suggested October, so here we are. So on behalf of the Veterans Council, Lee G. Smith, everybody that's here, the Military Moms, I hope that this is displayed and that the story of the sacrifice that goes into Memorial Island is conveyed to everybody that comes in. And in closing, each week, I mentioned on the radio one of the veterans that are honored in those cenotaphs that are there. This week, the fellow that I'll mention is William Claire McCully. And McCully is a fellow probably that my dad knew. He graduated from Vero Beach High School in 1937, went off and enlisted into the Army, was a tanker with the 2nd Armored Division, which was Patton's Hell on Wheels. And the man, even though he's from Vero Beach, must have been a rock star because he was identified as the ambassador for Sicilian Town and recognized for his, I guess, his ability to work with folks. He was given a battlefield commission or a commission, so he ended up being a first lieutenant. He was given the Purple Heart for injuries. And then, as Patton's Army went forward in Germany in the Rhine Campaign, his tank went forward to secure the withdrawal of some of other forces and was hit by artillery, and he was killed. What's of note of that is he was given the Distinguished Service Cross, and the Distinguished Service Cross is the highest award, second only to the Medal of Honor. In the fight of all of World War II, 2,300 Silver Stars were given to the Hell on Wheels Division. Only 23 Distinguished Service Crosses were given, and William McCully of Vero Beach was given one of those. So he is truly a recognizable hero and is recognized on the island. So when you go over there, look at the names on the cenotaphs, and when you come in here to City Hall, look at this beautiful painting. It should inspire you to be motivated to serve our great country. Thanks. Would you come forward, then, or do you have others that would like to talk?
Lynn, anybody? Lee? Inspiration? Okay.
Well, bring the painting, bring it so we can get our picture with it.
All right, all right. If we can get a picture, that would be cool up front. That would be neat. But anyway, just so that you can lose it.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Visit of the victors. Thank you.
Some of you get on the other side of the picture.
Why don't you just leave it right there?
Beautiful, I could enjoy it there.
Do you have a place in mind, Tammy?
I do. We will put it in the council chambers.
Excellent.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment, and public comment comes in two forms. It comes, the first four things that are listed here, which are handled a bit differently than open public comment. Open public comment will follow that, and if anyone has an issue that's on the agenda, you can also comment after any issue that's on the agenda. Chief David Curry, would you come forward and bring forward your... As a preface to this, I wanted to say that one of the things, well, I think we all know, and I've said it many times and have said many times, the first responsibility of government is to protect the citizens, their guests, and their ability to make a living. And some of you may know that Officer John Morrison, who is greatly revered here in town for the work that he had done in neighborhood watch, as well as liaison with the press and so on, retired after a long service with the city. And so we have a change in guard, and I want you to talk about and introduce the change in guard.
Yes, sir, and good morning, all. I did see John Morrison in Walmart the other day. He's getting ready to travel in his motorhome that he and his wife purchased, so, once again, we wish him well. And just before I introduce Anya, I want to mention that on the 25th, at the mall for the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, the Vero Beach Police Department does have a team entered that morning as well, so myself and others will be wearing the heels as well. So just to let everyone know that. We have a shining star here, one of our many shining stars, and I want to introduce to you Anya Cardon. She's been with us since June of 2012, so just... June of 2012, so just over two years. Anya is fluent in Russian. Anya comes to us with a four-year degree from Florida State. Sorry to you Gator fans. She has done a great job for us thus far. She is the first female officer to earn a spot. Let me preface that by saying earn a spot on our critical response team. And she works very hard at that. She works very hard at her fitness level. And she is, I think, going to do a really nice job in our community services position and our public information officer position. Some of you may have met her last night. She came in kind of on the end of preparation stages for the National Night Out, but hit the ground running and did a great job. And she was even involved with the unfortunate incident with the Cole Copola incident there on the bridge. So she kind of hit the ground running and did a great job and was very professional in doing so. So I bring to you and present to you Officer Anya Cardon.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for welcoming me into this position. I know I could never fill the shoes of John Morrison, even though they're not the red high heels. But there, it's a big spot to fill. And I promise to dedicate myself to serving this community, as I have been for the last two years. And I promise to strive in this position of a community service officer, as well as the public information officer. Neighborhood Watch being just one of the small parts of this position that I'm in charge of. And I will strive and be determined to be the best service to this community.
Tell us about some of the things you're charged with, though, just for the public.
Some of the community service events that I'm in charge of, aside from the National Night Out, we participate with some of the events with the sheriff's office, such as a Touch a Truck event that's coming up this weekend. We'll have one of our vehicles out there. I'll be attending that, as well as Samaritan Soup Bowl, which is coming up in November. And we'll be hosting a station at the police department, as we always do. We're also going to be participating in Shop with a Cop coming up for this Christmas holiday. There are several community events that we put on throughout the year. Neighborhood Watch meetings, I am working on trying to increasing that in different neighborhoods. Aside from the Central Beach that we've been focusing on, there are several other ones that I'm hoping to bring the meetings back to. It's been a little hectic the past couple of years. As well as the public information part of it, I am the liaison for the press. And all the information that the press requests goes through me. I confer with the chief before we release any information to the public as well. And it is in our best interest to release as much information as we can and ethically are allowed to, to the public because we do want the community to know what's going on with the police department and what's going on with our community and the public as well.
If a neighborhood was interested in Neighborhood Watch and didn't currently have it, who would they come to? How does that work?
They could come to me. I would put a list together for any of the people that are interested. We would try to do an initial meeting and see just how many people we can gather. And we can also send out some of the advertisement and information on our Facebook page. The community is very involved in that as well. And we'll try to get information out there to get some of the meetings going, townside as well as beachside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Turner.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the chief and all of our force. I think it's so important for the comfort of the citizens to see our officers out, out in public. And you all have done just a terrific job. I think it gives everybody that sense of security in seeing them. And thank you for having Vero Beach show, have a presence in all these community events. Really appreciate it.
Including the United Day Day of Caring.
Including the United Way Day of Caring, Chief.
See, manager, yeah.
Thank you.
But Anya's going to do a great job. And all those things she mentioned, I'll be in part of as well, as we always are. So she's going to keep me busy as well. So thanks again.
David, you can stay there a minute. And I think we agreed to talk about the 9/4, which is yours, Ms. Kramer.
Right. And I was going to want to bring up Public Works as well. You know, I think over the last several years, I mean, 17th Street Bridge has been kind of the, the back of the, back of the mind as being a safety problem. I think anybody that drives over that bridge and sees people walking, sees people riding bicycles, knows that there's a problem there. And it's almost too bad that it takes an event to push it to the forefront to actually want to take action on something like that. And, you know, what I wanted to do is I just wanted to get a consensus from council that, you know, we really do need to look at doing something there. And I know some other council members have had some ideas. And I would like to really just have a discussion so that the public knows that we are going through the different ideas of what we can do in order to make that bridge safer.
Well, this comes from me. I ride my bicycle occasionally across to the gym. And it is frightening to have cars come from behind you, even in the daytime. Another thing, an observation over the many years, it used to be that the Barber Bridge had almost all the traffic. But you can go over the 17th Street Bridge or the Barber Bridge at almost any time, and there are people on it, whether pedestrians. Another issue on the Barber Bridge is sometimes the bicyclists ride outside the barrier not to collide with the pedestrians. But it's certainly a very unsafe feeling to be riding a bicycle. And Chief Curry advised me that bicyclists, any wheel vehicle, has to go the same direction as a car. So that means they can't walk head on. They have to have the, they have to have automobiles coming from. One last observation, there are people that go across these bridges much too fast. Recently, we have had a police patrol on Indian Bay a couple days in the last two weeks pulling people over. But there's, there are people that go much too fast on these bridges. Those are my comments. Ms. Turner, yours?
And so certainly, yeah, but there are people that go too fast on that bridge. Living at the base of that bridge, I have seen an increased police surveillance of the traffic, and I appreciate that. And I think what people, you know, looking at the 17th Street Bridge, I mean, it is a Florida Department of Transportation facility. It is not a Vero Beach road. And in order to have a permanent barrier, you need a sufficient right of way. And that doesn't exist to put up a barrier on the 17th Street Bridge. So, you know, it's not that the city's been negligent or not looking at these issues. I mean, that is the reality of the situation. If there's something else we can do to improve, certainly open to it.
Ms. Graves, you...
I, I'm glad this was on the agenda. I had spoken to Mr. O'Connor Saturday about what our options were. And I believe that he and Monty have been working and in contact with the Department of Transportation and have some potential ideas. And then we can't always take on speeders by putting a patrol up there and really letting people know speeding is not acceptable over our bridges when we have pedestrian traffic.
Ms. Fletcher, your comments?
Oh, just, there's, we're in the process of doing what we can and finding out what we can do by contact with Florida Department of Transportation. As Pilar said, it is their facility, and we can't do anything without going through them first. But we are actively looking for some attenuation of the problem, if there is any out there. Monty, have you come up with anything?
Monty Falls Director of Public Works, I spoke with Jim on Saturday and Monday morning was in contact with the Florida Department of Transportation down in Fort Lauderdale. They have advised that they'll have a team come up and look at the bridge and promised me that within two weeks, they could have some recommendations of what could possibly be done on a, as an immediate measure. And that might be something as simple as putting some raised pavement markers on the white lines on the edge of the bridge. So if you were to drive across those, it would give you that sound or feel that you...
Audio, yeah.
So they're looking at that. They're also going to have their structures team look at the bridge to see if there is any possibility. They said, don't get your hopes up because the bridge was constructed 1979. Back in those days, there wasn't as much attention given to pedestrians. So the width of the bridge is limited between those rails. But they're going to look at all that and give us their recommendations. And then we'll at least know where we stand and what interim measures we could take.
Some years ago, we went through the same thing just after the bridge was built. And we tried to get those concrete barriers like we have on the Barber Bridge done. And at that time, they told us, and it was not in writing, but they told us that it was, the bridge would not, the structure would not hold the extra weight. That's...
We'll have that answer from them when they come back to us.
Yeah. My point, my point in saying this is I'd like to get this answer in writing so we have some form...
Yeah, we'll get some...
...in the files to refer to in the future.
Yes, sir.
Chief Curry, you have any comments, any suggestions?
Yes, sir. Speeding is probably the main complaint, traffic-related complaint that we've, we've always gotten, understandably, throughout the city, and to include the bridges. So we'll continue and increase that effort as far as the speeding goes. Because again, we all travel to and from, and we see it. And so we'll pick that up and increase that and try to schedule it more often than not. And I think maybe some comment effects and waiting for the report from the state would help possibly as well. The, as far as the incident goes, we haven't determined that speed was necessarily a factor, and that we're, we're working on that right now as far as gathering the information from the so-called black box. So that hasn't even been determined yet. So just, so you're aware of that. We'll be able to report as far as the potential speed down the road in the not so distant future.
All right. Thank you.
Chief, you may want to make a little comment about the family. And that incident really did touch the police department because of the relationship with some of the family members and their donations to the...
Yes, sir. Dr. Nick Coppola, as you may know, last year donated four automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, to the police department. And we thanked him at the department and posted that in pictures on our Facebook. And we were literally just talking about him and wanting to do the same again this year, a few days before the incident. So the Coppola family, Doctors Coppola, Nick and his brothers as well, they've been great to us. They're a great family. And of course, we attended the funeral yesterday as well. And we'll certainly stay in touch with them. And they, he had nothing, I went to see him that Saturday at his home, and they had nothing good to say about the city and the police department and all the officers that were there, and how professionally they handled himself, to include an email that I received the other day from one of the victim's advocates, again, stating how professional three of our officers were and that they were there for the family and how they handled the situation. And of course, that makes me very proud in that regard. So, close to the family, they're a great, great family to have in our community and always will be. And we're there for them for sure.
Given we've got consensus on this, I assume what, two weeks, within the November 4th meeting, we'll just, we'll get a briefing as to what the FDOT says, what we can and can't do?
Monty, I think the time's a little longer than that, isn't it?
Well, two weeks, they said they would have some interim report. But just as soon as we get something, I'll get it to Mr. O'Connor and get it to you.
Monty, my point again is, I want a letter from someone other than a public service officer. I want something from DOT management...
Yes, sir.
Saying what we cannot do.
Yes, sir.
And lastly, we'll also, as we always do, we'll get on Facebook and Twitter and make the community aware. And that'll be one of Anya's first jobs again, as far as that goes as well. And the public, they can call my office anytime and report an incident. We'll get right on it for them. And as you all know, you can do as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Wright, you're up now. We've asked Attorney, Jim has asked Attorney Wright to give us the utility litigation. But I think we should stretch beyond that and, you know, talk about where we are. And I have three or four questions for him. Where we are on the sale, where we are in the entire process, where we are in lowering rates, all these great many issues, really.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, council members, citizens. Glad to be here again. Thank you. I think I'm going to cover at least some of the question topics you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, in my remarks. Start off by talking about the status of the sale. This will be brief. There is no real news on the sale. Nobody has any new ideas for how to push it forward. I keep racking my brain to try to figure some way to get OUC to take a piece of this and a piece of that, and take back our long-term responsibility. And it just runs back into the, either stepping into our role in the contracts, which they've said will not work, or having to renegotiate the whole participation agreements between OUC and FMPA. And every time I work through this, I just try to come up with a different idea. It comes to a different blind alley. But the summary on the status of the sale is there's no news and no new ideas.
Chef, if you wouldn't mind, it might be useful to, on each element, because you're going to have five or six elements, and it'll be kind of cluttered if we go back, if you could tolerate a question at this point.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm your humble servant, and I will do this however you want it done.
Well, in the Sunday paper, it used the word "hope." And it seemed to be that we had little, little, little hope. I guess my question is, how much hope is there? I have really three questions. Have past city councils done all they could? And is this city council, in your best opinion, which you just referred to? And as far as, the fourth part of that is, I've always relied heavily on Florida Power and Light. I mean, they're the tremendous company. We're a little city. Comment on the, what hope do we really have? I mean, the best solution to this whole thing, obviously, is to sell the electric.
Well, if I were practicing as an attorney today, I would object to the fore on the grounds that it was a compound question.
I know.
But I'm going to do my best. In my estimation, based on everything I know, past city councils have done everything they could. This city council has done everything they could. I genuinely believe I've done everything I could to try to move this forward. You know, we hit a wall last June with OUC and FMPA. And in practical terms, the deal as structured, the transaction documents that are the deal as proposed, will not get done because of the failure of the critical condition precedent, i.e. OUC taking over the city's roles in, the city's legal positions, I should say, in the FMPA power contracts, the power purchase contracts, and the project support contracts. So to the extent of there being hope for closing this transaction, the transaction that's literally in black and white on the table, I cannot see that happening. Is there some hope? We know the, I don't know if it's a proverb, it may be, functionally it is, where there is life, there is hope. The deal is still alive. Our contract with FPL is still alive. We have agreed with FPL to keep our eyes, ears, minds open to trying to do something. So I can't say there's no hope. But the analysis that I see for this looks something like this. How could we get the deal done? The only way we can get the deal done is to either find a substitute SINE, i.e. some, another municipal utility who could lawfully step into our shoes, in the city's shoes, under the three big project support, project contracts, Stanton, Stanton II, and St. Lucie, in the way that we had hoped OUC would do. There are a couple of utilities out there that might be willing to take a certain amount of money to do it. I don't think so. Early on in the process, FMPA polled all of their members and participants and asked them, would they be willing to take on, would they be interested in taking on any of our contract megawattage? And I think out of our 54 and a half megawatts, I think they got expressions of interest for something like two or two and a half megawatts. I don't see it. You know, the two utilities that are still out there who could hypothetically do it would be JEA Jacksonville and Gainesville. Gainesville Regional Utilities or GRU. GRU has its own problems, you know. Hypothetically, there might be enough money that could be thrown at them that would, that would induce them to take this on because enough money would help them solve the other problems that they have. JEA has never shown any interest at all. The other, the other potential option would be for FMPA to take back or assume the city's economic positions under the contracts, i.e. take back the city's cost responsibilities and the city's commitments to bear long-term risks. And that's where this really hits a problem. And it goes like this. FMPA is an organization of cities just like us, some bigger, a fair number smaller. The costs are what they are. The risks are what they are. If one member drops out, Vero Beach in this analysis, all the other parties, all the other member cities and towns have to be willing to take on the cost risk and the other long-term risks of that. And they just don't seem to be willing to do that. And if you change shoes, and being a lawyer and economist, you know, I try to think about things in both directions. If a city came to you and said, we want you to take over our cost responsibility because we want to go do something else, and we want you to take on our long-term risks, you know, I don't know what you'd say. It's not, it's not an easy proposition. And by the way, the long-term risks are not trivial. There are serious potential... There are serious potential environmental risks associated with Stanton I and Stanton II. There are nuclear regulatory risks associated with St. Lucy. There are, you know, to, to be blunt, there are economic risks associated with failure or early shutdown. Not likely. It's conceivable that Stanton I could shut down, uh, because of the environmental regulations. If that happens, the costs are still there for as long as they're there and somebody's got to bear those. Um, you know, and you don't have to look far, you know, about 145 miles across the state, a little, it's like to the west northwest. We had the bad thing happen at Crystal River III. And if a nuclear plant shuts down, it's not just the costs associated with that, it's the lost replacement costs. It's, it's the, it's the extra cost for replacement power that one has to come up with instead of buying, instead of fuel costs of ninety cents a megawatt hour, you're looking at fuel costs of $32 to $42 a megawatt hour. And when you start talking about millions of megawatt hours, you're talking about a lot of money. Bottom line is, there are serious costs and serious risks that, that we would be asking, are asking, have asked, FMPA, would they take on? And they are, they've said, "We're really not willing to do that." I've had, go, go ahead.
You're a, you're an economist. I was trained as one too. What's the value of the risk?
It's hard-
Your opinion?
I'm going to tell you. It's a big number. And you just have to think about it from the, think about it from the perspective of Havana or Williston or Newberry or Mount Dora or even, uh, the, the others, Lake Worth, a city not too much different than us. They own certain percentages in various of these projects, New Smyrna Beach. They, they own various percentages in these projects. To ask them to take on the risk, they say fixed costs are what they are, risks are what they are. Just looking at the fixed costs, and I actually, I've actually kind of put pen to paper last night trying to think this through a little better, um, but I looked at the current fixed costs and the projected fixed costs for Stanton, the current fixed costs and some reasonable estimate for Stanton II and St. Lucy, and factored in the fact that the debt nominally will be paid off, as scheduled, will be paid off in 2019 for Stanton I, 2023 for Stanton II, and 2027 or something like that for St. Lucy, although with the upper rate, those costs are going to be there for a while. And I don't know exactly how FMPA is going to pay for that, et cetera, et cetera. But running out, you know, $4.6 million a year, which is the current fixed cost for, our, our share of the current fixed cost for Stanton I for five more years, and then whacking that down to $3 million after the debt service goes away, which is not a bad number for the next 18 years after that, and doing the same thing for Stanton II and doing the same thing for St. Lucy, you know? I'll tell you, I'll tell you the exact number I came up with, and this is ballpark, you can't, you know, you can't take this to, to, to the bank or use it as evidence really. But the number I came up with, just for making sure that all the fixed costs that would otherwise be put back on the other folks are covered, is $387 million. And you add on, and, and if I'm, you know, if I were the attorney for Lake Worth or Newberry or New Smyrna, I would say, "Guys, we got this environmental risk, we got early shutdown risk, we got nuclear regulatory risk, we got long-term decommissioning cost risks. FPL has a perfectly adequate, according to the PSC and according to their report, they have a perfectly adequate decommissioning reserve." But, you know, other serious, I mean, major utility executives have observed to me in private conversation that no nuclear project has ever come in on budget. Uh, and, you know, if the, if the decommissioning winds up 50 years from now costing a lot more than is in the reserve, that's going to fall back on the member. So you've got all these other risks. So there's, there's going to be a premium added on to that if you're asking others to bear it.
At least with, at least with the St. Lucy project, there is a decommissioning reserve. On the projects that are being run by OUC, there is no decommissioning reserve being done. And also, we're aware of the coal regulations coming up, that in the most recent budget, or I guess the last budget that Tom Richards received, looking at a five-year projection on Stanton, they're looking at, uh, installing a selective catalytic remover and turbine efficiencies to try to meet the 30% reduction of carbon emissions for coal plants. I mean, right now, the city of Vero Beach is predominantly dependent on coal. And this is, these new environmental regulations are huge. You can forget about that debt being paid out because then you're going to have to make these investments to meet these requirements. Yeah. We will not be debt-free on that project and the reduction in rates.
I understand that and all that would do would be to add on to the, to the long-term fixed cost risk that we'd be asking others to take on.
Can we return to the mediation issue?
That was next on my agenda.
Yeah, I interrupted him. I'm, I'm sorry I interrupted you with that piece of news, but go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you, I say this to the, uh, to the Chair of the Public Service Commission often, I say, "Mr. Chairman, you're the Chair of the Public Service Commission, we're going to do whatever you say." That's true. Uh, we, we get in procedural discussions about what's going to go on. I'm here to serve you. Okay. Conflict assessment meeting. We had the second conflict assessment meeting on Friday, September the 26th. It did not last really long. I didn't note the exact time. I don't think it lasted more than an hour, half hour, 40, something like that. There was some public comment. The town and county continued to say, "We want rates that are close to FPL's." I say, "We want rates that are close to FPL's too, uh, and we're going to do our best." I'm honest with them and I tell them I don't think that's realistic. I did go over, uh, a list of, uh, potential rate reduction measures, uh, both my list and, and the list that Mr. Gory's, uh, the Finance Commission and Utilities Commission had put together and talked about the, the more significant ones. The big, the big ticket item there, the, the biggest rate reduction opportunity we have is to renegotiate the terms of our power, of our 2008 power purchase agreement with OUC. Trying to move things along, uh, I, I think, I told, I think I told you all this last time. I know I told the, the other parties at the conflict assessment meeting this. Uh, around the 22nd, 23rd of September, uh, the OUC folks told, told me that they thought we could have an MOU within about four weeks. You know, if that's what they could do, that's what they could do. I called Mr. Browder back, Chris Browder, the General Counsel and Vice President of OUC, called him back last week and said, "It would really help us out a lot if we could accelerate this process." And he said, "Yeah, we'll see what we can do." To, to, to that point, Mr. O'Connor and I are meeting with the OUC folks and I, it'll be at least Mr. Browder and Jan S. Buru and probably Klastin Sunanon, but at least, at least two of those. We are meeting with them this Friday at noon in Orlando. I hope to have a, I hope and expect to have a more definitive, a definitive, or something like a proposal with numbers in it by that time. And my goal is to get that worked into, uh, a more definitive, comprehensive package of what we think we can do to lower rates by a week from Friday so that I can give it to y'all for, by council on the 21st of October, two weeks from today. That's, that's my report on that. I was going to talk about next steps in the conflict assessment, conflict resolution process, but I'll stop there for questions.
No.
We're going to stop with the medi- yeah, certainly have some questions.
Sure.
I guess, I'm, yeah, having attended this last meeting, I'm still confused with what our strategy is.
Oh, I, I am sorry for not communicating effectively. Our strategy is get OUC to reduce the capacity payments as much as they will and do everything else we can, which may include the other items on, on the list that, that we, that we distributed.
I was going to say, the meeting with Indian River Shores, I felt like it was just appearing that we were looking like delaying, trying to get another meeting in there. I mean, are we just trying to increase, you know, legal costs? I mean, walking into a meeting without any fin, any financial numbers, no schedule. I mean, I tell you what, before we go into mediation with all the elected officials, I certainly want some firm numbers, I want some implementation time. What is, how much is the capacity charge of OUC?
I think for the current, I think for the current fiscal year, it's $13,205 per megawatt month. It's either that or $12,700 per megawatt month. I'm not sure when the break is. I think for the fiscal year, it's just started, I think it's $13,205.
I think it's the 13.
Yeah. That's $13, $13.20 per kilowatt month.
So I mean, $13,000?
Thirteen-
And that escalates on an annual basis. Well, he's figuring, one, one comment, Ms.-
Do some ciphering.
Ms. Turner, I, you know, when you're negotiating with someone like OUC, you can't say, "We have to have what we want today, we want it." You have to work with them to come to a reasonable solution. So I, I don't think the position that was taken at that meeting by whoever took it, that we should have had a, a final answer at that point in time was reasonable. That's just one man's opinion.
Chef, were you able to get, did you get the number? I think 13 is it this year and doesn't it go to 14 next year?
Ultimately, it goes to $14,950 per megawatt month. I, Jim, I just, I can sort of see the table. I don't remember if there's one more step between the 13,2 and the 14,95, 950. There may be, but whatever it is, within a couple of years, it's up to almost $15,000, $14,950.
So for, yeah, so on an annual basis, how much, how much is it at the current $13,200 or whatever for the city of Vero Beach?
I believe the current, the annual demand for this year is 95 megawatts, assuming that to be, it's within a couple of megawatts.
Yeah.
Assuming that to be correct.
98, I believe.
Pardon?
98, I believe, but go ahead.
It's close.
Well, okay, it's, it's, uh, it's, well, if it's 95, it's 15,000, sorry, $15,000,053,700 a year.
Okay. This is, the reason, you know, there is a method of madness in asking this. In the mediation meetings with Indian River Shores, you've stated that, "No, we cannot get to FPL rates," but that we should be able to close the gap between Vero Beach electric rates and FPL rates by 50%. Well, looking at round, round numbers, um, with a variation of about 25% or difference between FPL and Vero Electrics, that means that we would need a reduction of $12 million from, for us to be able to offer a 12, only, yeah, a 12% reduction and achieve that 50% mark that you're claiming we can do. You know, I'm looking at this list, I'm looking at those numbers. I was going to say, even if we got, eliminated the capacity charge, we would just barely get to that. So, you know, I want to see a structured thing as to timing and whatever, because I don't even believe that 12% reduction's possible, you know? I want to see the backup, the numbers, the timing. And prior to going into our, our mediation meeting with the county and Indian River Shores on, on the 28th, or 25th, Ms. Spock, what's the date for that one?
The 28th.
28th. On October the 28th. I mean, you can't expect your elected officials to go in and out with this.
Well, again, I, I caution you and then Chef answer the question because I, you have a good answer, but you can't negotiate by time schedule, Ms. Turner. I mean, we'll be where we will be when we'll be there, but we're, you know, we have partners, we have people we're dealing with and we have to deal-
But that's fine, I know OUC. What about, all the rest of these items aren't particular to OUC? I realize you're hanging your hat. I'm trying to get, you know, but I mean-
You're wrong about that.
On OUC capacity charge, but you've got to, I mean, how can you go into a negotiation without the information?
You're wrong about that. One of the items is closing or mothballing the plant and we can't do it without their permission and it is particular to them. And that's the second biggest thing. Go ahead.
Once again, you can present the financials on it though, Mr. Winger. And I have, I have, I have personally done some study on that. And once again, you can present, present the financials on it and the timing on it. And that's what I think you have to see on all these points.
Let's see what Mr. Turner, Mr. Wright has to say.
As I, to, to answer your immediate request, Council Member Turner, as I said, I expect to have real numbers from OUC by Friday. My, my current plan right now is to be back here on Monday to meet with Mr. O'Connor and try to nail down a, a more definitive all-around plan with the goal, as I said, being to give you a definitive proposal of a package, including a reduction in the OUC capacity payments, some other consideration that they've asked for in return for which I think they're going to give us something, something regarding Big Blue and replacing, mothballing Big Blue, replacing that with a peaking product. That's on the table. We have discussed it. We haven't discussed specific numbers on that, but-
No, because the key thing is buying the peaking power. And if you have to buy it from OUC and at what price, it certainly changes the economics of it.
Sure it does. But, but, but my, a couple of things. My, my plan is to have something definitive, numerical for you by a week from Friday. That is Friday, October 17th. Now, just, I'm not making excuses, but we, we don't have any legal right to force OUC to renegotiate this.
Certainly.
They have been very, they have, in my opinion, they have been very accommodating, very open-minded. We told them what we were looking for. We told them we're looking for a, a number that will get us more than halfway between us and FPL. And they didn't, they did not say, "You guys are crazy, go away." They said, "Let us crunch some numbers, we'll get back to you as soon as possible." That's going to be this Friday, October 10th.
So what we're saying is that the city of Vero Beach has no realistic way to reduce rates other than hoping that Orlando Utility Commission will be willing to renegotiate with us.
That, I would not, I would not say it that way.
Yet, that's, that's the, that's the fact, that you've given us nothing else and no other alternative but that one.
I think that's completely false.
Assuming, just a couple of things. Assuming that we, you know, I've had conversations with Mr. Richards on this subject. Assuming that we can mothball Big Blue, you know, get the permissions that we need from both FPL and, and, and OUC, and I think we can. Assuming we can mothball Big Blue and replace it with an inexpensive peaking product, an inexpensive capacity peaking product. Tom thinks, and this seems reasonable to me, that we can save a couple million dollars there. Couple million dollars is a significant amount of money. Through optimization, we can probably save some more. Through financing capex, we can say we can reduce some more. A few million dollars, it's not a lot, but, but it's not actually, a million dollars is not actually 1% or a dollar off the bill. A million dollars off the bill is more like a $1.23 off the bill. So if we save, if we, if we were to be able to knock $10 million a year off our revenue requirement, that would knock our rates down by about 12.3 million dollars, uh, no, sorry, knock the bill down. The, at the all-in cost per, per megawatt hour down by about 12, 12 and a quarter, 12 and a half dollars, that gets us down to 111 and change. That's my hope, that's my goal. We'll see what we can do. And, but you're, you're right, certainly, the big ticket item is what we can do on the capacity cost. I mean, we can maybe squeeze $4 million out through financing capex, through some optimization and through mothballing Big Blue. You know, we need more from OUC. We have asked them, we have discussed it with them, that they understand our needs and our desires. I mean, they know we want to get down to FPL's rates, that, that is not going to happen, but, but they, in my opinion, as I said, they have negotiated in good faith with us and I'm looking forward to our meeting on Friday.
I guess since this is the only time that we can have this discussion in the sunshine, I mean, earlier, early in, in this pro, process with the sale, there have had, I know Mr. Kramer's proposed saying, "Oh, well, a partial sale would be the thing to do, that maybe the city would be better off, um, without the outside customers or without Indian River Shores and that that would be the thing to do." Um, I still would like to see that scenario of the city, city only, our operation cost. Um, Mr. Kramer's also said he'd like to let Indian River Shores go. Well, if that's the case, then why are we even continuing to, you know, to argue with this? I'd like to see what the financials for operation would be without Indian River Shores. And although, you know, we can't really estimate what the value of our transmission and our, all our, all our assets are, especially if we lose this case and we're forced to sell it, you know, or, or remove it according to the court, but I think we need to see what the implication is of that to the city and to our-
Ms. Turner, I'll be, I'll be glad to give you that right now. FMPA costs 10% more than OUC right now. Basically, and with the dis, uh, inefficiencies that we'd have, uh, you're not going to get rid of part of Jim's salary, you're not getting rid of part of all alignment and all the rest of it, uh, proportionally. The number comes, we'd have to raise the rate if we didn't have the outside customers to the city people 20%. And that's a pretty good number, 20%. Additionally, if we did not have the return on investment, call it what you like, and we got $2 million instead of $5 million, we'd have to raise the taxes of the city people 75%, namely from $2.04 to $3.058. Now, if you think that- Now, if you think that at least I'm going to vote for anything that's going to raise our taxes of the city people 75% and is going to raise their power bill 20%, you've got another thought coming.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not asking for, I'm asking for the information. I've obviously, have run my numbers. Mr. Kramer, obviously, in the past, has run various different numbers. And I would like to ask that the staff prepare those, just, you know, on an operational budget, what it would look like. And I realize it's not going to be fine-tuned, but I think this is information that everybody needs. And once again, that's running the electric without Indian River Shores and also looking at it as a city only and what the, what the operation fallout would be.
We can run some of those numbers, and we'll work with Chef on that. But we need to remember that this lawsuit is not just Indian River Shores. You're not going to be able just to isolate them, that the county has sort of joined in on this. And I know they would have a different position, but...
Certainly. That's why I thought, I looked at it without, you know, without Indian River Shores, and then if it was the city only. Once again, this is, you know, finances that people said, "Ah, this works." Yeah, I started back seven years ago looking at it. And I know that, yeah, pulling that apart is not the best answer for the city.
Okay, well, I'm sorry we interrupted you.
I'm not.
Go ahead, well, it's probably necessary. Go ahead with the, the meeting, the mitigation, all the steps that come forward. I think that's where you're going.
Yeah, I was going to continue to talk about the conflict resolution process that we are in. I asked the group, I asked the town and the county to have one more meeting so that we could have the, a more definitive rate reduction proposal to them. They declined. I said, "Okey-dokey. That's your right." And accordingly, the next steps are for there to be a joint public meeting, which has now been scheduled for October the 28th. And I think someone said something about the Richardson Center. Does that sound right? But that, that will include all 15 of the elected officials of the three primary conflicting governmental entities. I am exchanging emails with Mr. May, the town's attorney, to see if we can't identify a mediator or facilitator for that meeting. We'll see where that comes out. I am continuing, just so you'll know, I am continuing to work toward meeting with the town's attorney and their expert, Bruce, and Terry Deason, the former Chair of the Public Service Commission. I think that we can probably make that happen next week, but we don't have a definitive date. It's, it's a scheduling matter. After the joint public meeting, assuming that we don't achieve resolution at such public meeting, the next step in the process is for there to be a formal mediation of the conflicting governmental entities. If you add, and there are timeframes specified in the statute for that, you have to select a mediator within 14 days. If you can't do that, you refer it to somebody like the FSU Conflict Resolution Center Consortium, whatever it is. And then they get seven more days to select a mediator or facilitator, and then there's 14 days after that, within which you're supposed to have the mediation session itself. Add that all up, that's 35 days. Now, all dates are waivable by the parties by mutual agreement. But if you add 35 days onto October 28th, you get December 2nd as kind of the last target date for, for the mediation. So assuming that we don't solve everything on October 28th, I think we're looking at mediation in early, in early December. That's, that's all I got on the conflict resolution process, but I'm happy to take more questions.
I'd just ask one more thing, is that when, before that mediation meeting that we have on the 28th, that you take this list of preliminary potential cost-reduction measures, you add to that the estimated savings for each of those items and the time to implement those actions? How soon they could possibly be implemented?
It was, it was always my intent to include that as what I hope to give you a week from Friday.
Great. Thank you very much.
I have one further question, but you have further points, so...
I was going to talk about rate reductions last, but I've really covered, we've really covered that. The only other thing I was going to mention very briefly is that there's no change in the status of the county's declaratory statement petition at the Public Service Commission. The staff or the staff of the PSC are scheduled to issue their recommendation on November 13th, and the commission is scheduled to vote on the issue at its agenda conference on November 25th. And that's all I've got, and I'm happy to take any more questions.
Well, my question, and others may have questions, and it's a very simple one. Are there other avenues that this city or this city council could take, either legislatively or legally, that would have any chance of success? Your opinion?
In my opinion, no. And I'll tell you generally why. You know, you hear a lot of talk about breaking the contracts. I don't see any way you can break the contracts. You hear talk about antitrust suits, et cetera. At the end of the day, I don't believe the courts of Florida are going to mess with this group of project contracts, the power cut contracts, project support contracts, and all the ancillary documents. With, I'm going to back up a step. You know, why are we in what we're in? We're in what we're in because 31 years ago, 30 years ago, and 20 years ago, in 1983, 1984, 1994, respectively, your forebears, the former city council members of the city of Vero Beach, chose to take virtual ownership positions in three power supply contract, power supply projects. That looked like a good deal at the time. They wanted to do it. A bunch of other cities joined in, and that, that's how it is. Things have changed in the energy markets. Those projects are underwater. They just are. That's the truth. So, but, but trying to, to break out of those is going, is, in my opinion, not going to happen, because nobody first, nobody's come up with the cause of action to do it. You know, a lot of, a lot more attorneys who know more about different areas of law than I do have looked at this, lots and lots. But at the end of the day, I don't believe the courts of Florida would think about touching contracts or interfering with contracts that were validated by the courts of Florida and, and upon which public agency financing that Florida has relied. Similarly, I don't believe the Florida legislature is going to mess with our power supply contracts for the exact same reason. You know, it would, it would, I believe it would send a stunning message to Wall Street. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to happen. And on the antitrust theory that's been articulated, to be liable for antitrust violation, you have to either monopolize or attempt to monopolize. We chose, as did every other project participant in these projects, to enter into these projects. We didn't have to. You know, nobody held a gun to our head. Nobody said, "You have to participate in St. Lucie." Nobody said, "You have to participate in Stanton or Stanton II." We joined into these projects. We signed the contracts. We took our virtual ownership positions. FMPA took a on-the-deed title, titular ownership position in these projects. I just, I don't see any anti-competitive behavior there.
Thank you for your answer, Mr. Kramer. Do you have anything you'd like to ask or say?
Well, it just seems like we've been at this for seven years, and we've gotten to where we are now. I would just like to see, you know, I kind of agree with you. I'd like to see the numbers on these options, and, you know, I mean, it's, you know, our responsibility to get these rates down, and that's got to be the priority. And I greatly appreciate your work in moving in that direction.
Mrs. Graves, do you have any comment?
I just look forward to seeing the numbers coming back from OUC, where we go from there.
Mr. Blatcher?
No.
I do have one question. Supposing we do get a good, some good numbers back from OUC, are we at the complete freedom to re-ink a deal with OUC to go forward with that? Or is the FPL contract present kind of an issue with that?
That's a really good question, Vice Mayor Kramer. The, the, you may remember in July, we, we and OUC and FPL signed a three-way waiver letter allowing negotiations to take place. Everybody reserved their rights to say, to do whatever they might otherwise want to do if they, if, if the ultimate proposed rate, rate-saving mechanism means, modifying the OUC contract, for example, was not acceptable to them. FPL could object. If there, if we were going to do something with FPL and OUC wanted to object, they reserved their rights to object. The, the implementation of the renegotiation of the capacity charges is, is something that would manifest in a, in an amendment to our PPA with OUC. So I wouldn't say it is re-ink a new deal. I would say, you can call it. Functionally, it is. It's going to be, it's going to be an amended contract. So for all practical purposes, it is a new deal. You know, FPL could say, "We're not going to allow you to do that. That's, we think that's in violation of your contract." Frankly, I do not believe they could do that. They, they've articulated their, their commitment to helping us do what they can to lower rates, and, you know, I believe.
Mr. O'Connor, you, you're probably our leading expert in this whole thing, anyway.
Leading expert? I'm not sure there is such a thing. But I, I think Chef has pretty well summed it up, and he and I are working with OUC. We think that we're going to get some real movement there. I guess he and I would have a debatable issue if we can get to 12%. But, but anyway, we think we can bring it down substantially. And that is the big nut. That capacity charge, that demand charge is the real thing that we've got to really grab a hold of. I personally felt like OUC showed a lot of positive emotion in that, in that discussion. And they have assured us, and we know that they have been down to our plant, they have talked to Tom Richards, and doing the, the scratching of the numbers, our position is, is that we would like to get those capacity charges back into what is the market price of the day and provide them with the flexibility that if the market changes, then obviously, that we would have to be flexible in that area as well. Coming back to losing 60% of our customers, we can run these numbers for you and do whatever is necessary in order to make it work. But you can't run any business that I'm aware of and lose 60% of your market and be a viable business. But that being said, the electric utility business is different, and it does have some unique qualities. But we would still have to go back, for example, OUC. We've got to show OUC that we're going to have some type of customer base that can make that work. And I'm not sure you can just isolate Indian River Shores in all of this discussion. We need to keep in mind that Indian River County has bought a place at the table. They have been through this whole mediation. Something also that's very important to note, this mediation is not something by choice. It is something by state law we have to do. And as it really stands officially and legally speaking, we're not in litigation with either one of those parties. We don't get into litigation of those parties unless the mediation breaks down and we don't have a result at the end of this process. And the state law is very specific as to how it falls. And we are under obligation to negotiate in good faith the best that we can and provide the information. And I think Chef has done that. He also has had the sidebars with those attorneys that are involved, and I think that's another part of the critical path of trying to see, is there some flexibility? We've had that discussion internally. If the bottom line to Indian River Shores, as an example, is FPL rates as they stand today, the answer is, we cannot meet that demand. Now, project five years into the future, and let's say fracking becomes an environmental issue, because historically speaking, over the last 30 years of the utility business, everybody's been changing routes as to where your retail rates fall. Just ask Duke Energy what happens when there's one mistake made in a purchase contract that they did, and they wound up with Crystal River. That's a very, very expensive exercise that they're going through. So again, the utility, electric utility business is, is a unique business to be in, but it still has some of those basic business principles. And, and when we're talking about trying to figure out how to retain at reasonable prices 60% of our customer base, I think it's critical that we try to find that solution.
Jim, before you go, I mean, if you lose 60% of your base, but you get rid of 70% of your revenues, would you be better off?
70% of your revenues?
Or 70% of your expenses?
No, sir, I don't, I don't think you would. I, and one of the reasons, if you could, the, the fact of the matter is, we are tied into long, long-term contracts, and it's not like we can set the price. Something that keeps being thrown back up at us in, through these discussions, you did it for water and sewer. Why can't you do it for electric? And it's, the reason is, we don't control the price of our product. Our product is contracted out, and there is no indication that the pricing of that product, our base use, is going to change because it affects 33 other customers.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, the argument goes both ways. I mean, you really can't, you can't say that you lose 60% of your base and you can't, you know, you still can't stand, and it's, you know, I find that utterly false.
Oh, you can stand. No, don't get me wrong.
Well, the point being is that you do pay off, pay off debt service, and you do get rid of the power plant. You do become more efficient. And without an in-depth study, you really just can't say that.
But the thing you're stuck with is, it just so happens that the FMPA entitlements, I hate to call them that, obligation, of NOSE, whatever it is, represents 40% of our power, give or take. It's a little less than that, but not much. And it just so happens that 40% of the customers are in the city. And it just so happens that that power cost that we're hung with, with FMPA currently, is 10% more, and that was in June. It's more than that now, 10% more than OUC. So the reality is, as long as you're, you know, the reality is that by averaging in, if we make a new deal with OUC, we can bring down the weighted average of the very high-cost FMPA power by bringing, averaging in lower-cost OUC. You, you saddle the system with $90 power against a bill of $125, and you've still got to pay for the fixed cost of the operation. There's no way that if you cannot average in OUC, to average, get a weighted average down, that the cost for the people of Vero Beach doesn't go up tremendously.
You know, the point being is that earlier on, FMPA was amenable to doing those kind of things. If you had the cash, you can finance down out of those, those base costs for those entitlements. FMPA was amenable to doing that kind of thing. I mean, it's foolish to argue it now. FPNA doesn't want that kind of thing. But, you know, FMPA was very amenable to working with us. Now, they've been polarized, and they won't probably do anything with us.
Well, I don't have any disagreement with anything you just said. But what you just did say was FMPA will not bend. And as far as I know, that's the truism, Jim.
Just a comment on the OUC cost. I did get that information. In 2014, it's $12,673. In 2015, which would be January, it goes to $13,205.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor.
But, you know, it's, it's a terrible cliche, but we're between a rock and a hard place. We're between a rock and a hard place, and we don't have any way of bringing our rates down to, we don't have any, any way of getting our rates as low as we'd like to get them. We can get them lower. And we don't have any way, and I, I said this in February '13, we, I saw no way at that point that we were going to be able to exit the FMPA contracts. And I don't think anything's changed. We're stuck between the FMPA contracts and the world. And, you know, if those in the other community don't like it, I join them. I don't like it either. But it is what it is. Moving on, if we, as a point of order, we could take a break here. Maybe it's 11 o'clock. We've been at it an hour and a half. Or you want to press on with the rental?
Can you take just a quick break?
Okay, we'll take a break till 11:10, please.